Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the San Benito C I S D Board of Trustees Special Board Meeting. Today is Thursday, December 8, 2022. The time is 6 o'clock, and I call this meeting to order. We begin with roll call. Ms. Janie Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Mr. Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Mr. Teresa Servellón.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Weller. There you go. And I'm here. We do have a quorum established. We move on to item 1.2, Public Comment. Ms. Peggy, no one signed up? So we can move on to item 2.1, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding the Acceptance of Resignation of School Board Trustee Janie Lopez. Ms. Servellón?
Yes, sir. We have received a letter of resignations from trustee Lopez due to the fact that she is moving on to greener pastures and bigger and better things as she was elected as a state representative. She has submitted her letter of resignation to the board and to the district, and so now it is up to the board to accept that resignation.
I have a comment. I just want to wish Ms. Lopez the best of luck in your new endeavor. We wish you the best. You will be missed, and best of luck to you and whatever you do. Do the best that you can. Okay? We're proud of you.
Go ahead, Ms. Lopez. You wanted to say something?
I did. I do have a message for everybody here.
The floor is yours.
You made me teary. Take a breath. San Benito C I S D, families and employees, I come to you with a humble heart and thanksgiving. As an alumni of San Benito C I S D, former teacher, school counselor, and director, and a community resident and homeowner in our fine city, you elected me to represent you as a school board trustee. I have the honor of representing our San Benito C I S D community needs. Since the first day you asked me to consider running for office, I prayed and ask God to be my guidance and give me the boldness to be the voice you deserved. At times, there were difficult and unpopular decisions to make, while others were fun and easy. But no matter what, I took that trust you endowed in me and always upheld decisions that were right, ethical, and legal, in the best interest of the students. Most importantly, I upheld and stood by these decisions that would have a positive impact on the district and always be in the best interest of our community, our children, and our staff. Now the citizens of San Benito and citizens surrounding the cities in Cameron and Willacy Counties have entrusted me to represent them as their state representative. I will uphold to the same standards as I held being a board trustee, serving as a much-needed voice for our schools, cities, and rural communities. I have mixed feelings as I vacate my seat. Sadness to leave all the wonderful people, but a heart full of excitement to have been chosen to represent more people across many communities, which proudly includes my hometown and you. As many of you know, some of my trustee colleagues and I have not agreed on some things, but what I can tell you, as I do not leave this seat without a grateful heart for my colleagues, I'm thankful that they give their time to represent you. Life is all about perspective, and I have a different perspective than most at times. However, I've never tried to achieve a popularity contest, but rather to be fair and honest. Through the hard work and the determination, we all rose above and did many wonderful things for the district. With all this said, I will eventually represent those trustees that I leave behind. Board President Moreno, Mario Silva, Oscar Medrano, and all the rest of you, thank you so much for your support and for working together. I am proud to state that together we increased wages and became better competitive in hiring bus drivers, made tennis equitable for Riverside while empowering the parents to be the voice for their children, improved the bus barn and other infrastructure, held the district's spending on taxpayer money accountable, assessed our policies and procedures and expenditures with a forensic audit for betterment of the district, increased student enrollment, became the only T E A school-approved online program in the county, and we also had numerous awards in sports and other curricular competitions. Thank you to all the employees that invested their lives and hard work to this district. And I know because each of you love our children, I know that you will continue to do a great job. Thank you, San Benito, with all my heart and mind. This is not a goodbye, but rather it's let's keep working together as a team to be that voice that our children deserve in Austin. Thank you for trusting in me to be your voice. Board of Trustees, I pray that you always do what is right for our families. God bless you all, and I'm always a phone call away. Thank you.
Before we move forward as well, Ms. Lopez, I just want to congratulate you on your new position as a state representative. I hope that you don't, and I know that you won't, forget the community you represented here as a school board member, and I trust that you will continue making a difference with your new venture as well. So thank you for your time spent with the San Benito C I S D Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And you all are invited to Austin.
Thank you.
So move, Mr. Medrano.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Orlando Lopez. Do I have a second to accept the resignation?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Oscar Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, we move on to item 2.2 on the agenda, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval Regarding to Name or Appoint a Board Trustee for Place 7.
Mr. Moreno, I would like to nominate Mr. Gomez now that Ms. Lopez will be vacating her position.
Okay, we have a nomination by Mr. Rudy Corona.
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay, are there any more nominations? Anyone else would like to make a nomination?
No.
Okay, so nominations will cease. We have a nomination by Rudy Corona for Mr. Frutoso Gomez.
Yes, sir.
And a second by Mr. Orlando Lopez. All those in favor to appoint Mr. Gomez as the replacement for place 7, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion carries 6-0. I believe Mr. Gomez is here, present with us tonight. Mr. Gomez, welcome.
Thank you very much. Can I say a few words?
Yes, you may.
First of all, I want to go ahead and, of course, thank our God up there. He's always blessed us, our families, and I know He's blessed all of you. What you guys do, we thank you. What you did today, my sincerest gratitude, that I will do my best for the community of San Benito and for all the students, the employees, and everyone else. I look forward to working with all of you and becoming a team player so we can proceed to do a great job that all of you have dedicated yourself to, because what you guys do is very difficult. You hear it in the news, and I'm going to tell you, to me, you're doing a great job. Just keep it up, and I will be looking forward to working with you, with Ms. Servellón. I will be here too, at your beck and call whenever you need me. To the rest of the board members, Mr. Moreno, thank you. And I'm going to start over here with Ms. Cruz. I have not met Ms. Cruz, but thank you, Oscar, thank you. Ms. Lopez, good luck, we'll miss you. And Mr. President Moreno, thank you. And of course, Mr. Lopez, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Corona, for nominating me tonight, and of course, someone I've known for many, many years. I think it was like 100 years now. We used to work together when the kids were very young at the Boys and Girls Club. We took time to help the community with that, and with that, I say thank you, and I will be here to support everyone and work closely with you guys. Thank you.
And just so the audience and our board members here present tonight realize this new nomination and acceptance of Mr. Frutoso Gomez as the replacement for Ms. Lopez, we are planning on having a ceremony on next Tuesday's regular board meeting to where you will be sworn in and take your rightful place now. Mr. Gomez, once again, congratulations. All right? Look forward to working with you, sir.
Congratulations, and I know you all will do a great job. Thank you, Ms. Servellón, for your hard work, dedication, as well as the staff.
We move on to item 2.3, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval of Budget Amendments for the 2022-2023 school year. Ms. Servellón?
Yes, sir. With that, I will call Ms. Mata to come forward and walk us through those budget amendments.
Good evening, Board -- sorry. Good evening, Board President Moreno, Board of Trustees, and Ms. Servellón. We have a big budget amendment, which is for, sorry, 891,500. I don't know. I don't think we put these on the thing, did we? We didn't put them up there, right? Okay, so I'll just go through it. So it's 891,500. It's requesting use of fund balance. This is for a grant applied by technology for E C F. We will get 100% reimbursed, but we do need to issue a purchase order so we can order the items needed and so forth. So Ms. Pena is here. We have questions as far as what they're going to purchase and so forth, but it is for technology, and we will be reimbursed 100%.
And this reimbursement will come from where? Can you elaborate on that?
It is from -- yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Pena.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am.
It's through the year eight program.
I just wanted to hear that.
It's E C F, Emergency Connectivity Fund.
Okay.
Devices for the students.
How long does that 100% refund take to come back to us?
As soon as we receive the devices, we submit all the paperwork, and typically it takes about three months or so.
Oh, the 90 days? Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, can you please explain what this is for?
This is for devices. We're going to be purchasing 853 Chromebooks and 1,640 iPads, and these are going to be assigned to students that need a device at home. So for the students, they're going to take them home and bring them back.
So is this additional to what we have, or have we replaced them?
It's additional.
Additional, okay. So do we have a -- I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is if they have damaged -- I know prior, if they had damaged computers, we would send them back for repair? So this is, we just need additional?
I'm not understanding your question.
Are these going to be allocated?
I'm trying to understand.
Do you already have the allocations for these devices?
We did have a meeting with academic services, and we determined where they're needed, where it's students that don't have a device at home, that they're going to be assigned to those students.
Do you know if these are going to be mainly elementary or secondary?
It's both. It's middle schools and elementary schools.
Lee, can you review? Maybe some of the board members weren't present, or they don't, you know, it's been a while, but this is the emergency fund that T E A rolled forward, well, really, the state rolled forward, federal government rolled forward because of COVID and for students that don't have devices at home. So do you want to go a little bit through that?
So originally, this grant was brought into existence because of the pandemic, and that's when it began. So the district applied for one of the applications back in 2021, but of course, they hadn't gone through with it. F C C extended the deadlines, and we were able to take advantage of that application from 2021, and then we had a second application this school year, which was awarded, and so we are taking advantage of both of those. But these devices were with the intention of providing a device for the students at home for virtual school. But of course, because the pandemic ended, F C C allowed the school districts to determine the need, and we know that our students need devices because of the pandemic, and so that's why we're going to be providing them for them.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
I also recall, Ms. Pena, though, I just want to add, I know that a lot of our students already do have those devices, and in a former board meeting that we had, we discussed the, I guess, the life of the Chromebooks that already exist, and maybe there were advantages or disadvantages of when we -- because they do get repaired, yeah, they do get messed up or broken or whatever, and so, yeah, in most cases, the cost of fixing those Chromebooks really outweighs purchasing new ones, correct?
It's not worth it. So the way we determine that is if the cost of repair is 50% more of the cost of the item.
Right.
It's not worth replacing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
And that's it. I think I only have one. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
We need approval.
Okay, so continuing with item 2.3, we have a motion by Mr. Lopez who approved the budget amendments as presented for the 2223 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 7-0. And I do want to clarify, go ahead and clarify for the public, those of you meeting with us tonight, and those that may be listening at home. Over to my right, I still have Ms. Janie Lopez here, and she's still a current board member, although we have accepted her resignation. She continues to serve until the new board member takes office. So that, just in case anybody is wondering if she has a vote or why she's voting, she still does have a vote. Okay. We move on to item 2.4, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Approval Regarding Purchases Over $25,000. Ms. Servellón?
So I am requesting that the board approve the purchases over $25,000 as presented.
So move.
Okay. Any questions before we continue? No questions? Okay, we have a motion by Oscar Medrano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 7-0. Item 2.5, Review Discussion and Presentations Pertaining to R F P 1222, Agent of Record for Employee Health Products. With that, I think we turn it over to?
To Mr. Galassos that will be assisting us with bringing in our presenters.
Good evening, honorable board members, superintendent. It's a pleasure to be here and an honor to present in front of you, in administration and community. My name is Gilberto Gonzalez. It's been a pleasure and honor always to come and be invited to present. Before I begin, this is Pete Clavio. He's a known resident of San Benito, distinguished young man. He's working with us. In fact, those brochures that he's passing out, if you noticed the bottom right-hand corner, those are our local offices. And San Benito, we also have a local office with Pete Clavio's participation. Again, let me introduce myself. My name is Gilberto Gonzalez. I've been in the business for 27 years. I've been a benefits consultant. I'm actually the benefits consultant for Region 2, Region 20, and Region 19. F B S is celebrating over 33 years, actually 34 this coming year. This is our agenda for tonight, and I'm going to be presenting on. I'm going to go over an introduction of who we are and how long we've been doing it, and what makes us the best fit for San Benito I S D. The benefits enrollment platform, that is a very strong element of what makes us successful in this responsibility to a school district, and I'm also going to show how San Benito I S D can save a tremendous amount of money and time and effort by having us as your third-party administrator and agent of record. I'm also going to go over the enrollment management, and then why is it that we, F B S, is the best fit? First of all, as I stated earlier, F B S has been in the business for over 33 years. We're celebrating actually 34 years. We have 510 clients, they're all school districts, which is a little bit less than half of the school districts in the state of Texas. I think the state has 1,200 school districts. We are the largest T P A, or third-party administrator, in the state of Texas. That gives our clients a lot of responsibility where they can utilize our leverage. Having that kind of leverage in book of business, we can bring and demand great products and lower rates, and we use that leverage to benefit the employees and the school district of San Benito. We are currently servicing 15 out of the 20 educational service centers. There's no other competitor that comes near the numbers I'm describing to you here today. In fact, I believe we might be the only third-party administrator presenting to you this evening. A third-party administrator, the reason why you would want to be encouraged to participate with a third-party administrator is because we, as a third-party administrator, remove all liability and responsibility off the shoulders of the school district, and we put it onto our shoulders, as opposed to you working with a broker. I am local. I'm from Edinburgh. I work out of the McAllen office or the Lyford office, depending on where my clients need me to be, but the majority of the time, we come and visit our clients. This is just a few of our clientele. If you notice, we have Fort Worth I S D, and we have very small school districts like San Belita. We all treat them with the highest level of respect and dignity, and we give them the highest level of customer service. Our technology is what sets us apart. There's no one else that stands before us or leads the way. We have been the point of the spear for many, many years. As a matter of fact, all the technologies that surrounding school districts want to acquire are based because of us. Our enrollment platform is second to none. Every single presenter that will come after me rents their enrollment platform, or they lease it. Our enrollment platform is owned by us. Why is that important to you? It's important because you have a white-label platform that allows you to put San Benito I S D on it, and the superintendent can add its culture, her culture, the culture of the community, of the leaders of the school board. That's very important because we can respond very rapidly if there's, for instance, an emergency coming. Our platform can alert your community, its employees, that a hurricane's coming, and the superintendent can utilize this platform to send out a push notification, along with your own emergency standard operating procedures. But this enrollment platform stays on 24/7, so the employee can go on and enroll, educate themselves, and also share with their spouses. Also should tell you that I never wanted to be an insurance agent, never did I ever dream of being an insurance agent. I joined the service when I was 17 years old because my father died when I was 11. My mother raised four children. All of us got our education. What was challenging for my mom is, and my dad too, if my dad had someone like me to educate them on the importance of life insurance, then my mom would have had a benefit, a death benefit, but she didn't. So she had to raise four children with a fifth-grade education and provide for them. I'm very proud of my mom, what she accomplished, and all four of us got our degrees. But I use this hand to educate my clients. I say, the first thing I learned from my mom, I was the index finger. I was the oldest of four. She said, "Mejito, when you take care of people, the most important thing is to learn how to communicate, how to educate. Each one of you children have a different way of listening and learning." So I learned that early in life. When I joined the service at the age of 17, Cali Caranza, Vida de la Luna, was my recruiter. Very few people know he was a recruiter, but he gave me the opportunity to come back and help pay off her debt. When she lost her ability to work, no one ever told her about the importance of disability insurance. So I had to retire early from the military. I was an Army captain when I left the military. I was an airborne ranger, and I found it very challenging for people like my mom and my dad to get a full grasp of insurance. How are they really going to make important decisions to protect this family, for instance? This family occurs in every community. How can we educate families like this in every community to make the proper decisions? What tools will we give them to guide them to make important buying decisions? This enrollment platform has never been breached. We have a certain certification, security certification, that we have to go through the auditing purposes every single month, and we never had a breach within 14 years, ever since we've been following this practice. This enrollment platform has many different capabilities. The most important that I feel very responsible for creating is the phone app. Now, you can sign up and have this app with San Benito I S D because it's white-labeled. You can have your own colors, which are very important to every school district. You can have your own culture, and you can have your own wording. On the right, you see that we have on-demand videos, both in English, Spanish, Vietnamese. Pick the language that your employee speaks and is more comfortable speaking that language at home. They can watch this, they can share this with their family members. On the far left, where it says "One Touch Access" to your benefits, if you want to go find a provider, a pharmacist, an ophthalmologist, a dentist, this will not only give them a direction to go find that provider, but it will also provide in the middle a method to watch a video, again, in the language that they prefer. This app is second to none. You can ask my competitors if they have this. It's what sets us apart. It's the reason why we have more clients than anyone else. I guess the closest T P A that comes to us is probably around 300. I'm being conservative, actually around 236 clients, but we have quite a bit of separation, not because we're pushy, it's because we are what's in the best interest of its employees and its community. Now, if you want to test this app, you can use this QR code. Just take a picture of this QR code and then type in "F B S demo," and you can see for yourself how effective it is for your families of your employees to learn and be educated so they don't have to pay as much as they did in the past. The competitive products that we go out to search for, again, we use our own leverage. Because of our size, we're able to go out to the market and demand the best benefits. We represent 129 different carriers, from medical to voluntary employee benefits like disability, basic life insurance, cancer, critical illness. We can do that on your behalf. We can go out into the market so your own staff here doesn't have to spend the money and the time and the expertise to hire a consultant, because I come to you at no cost. Every single aspect of what we do is at no cost to you. In fact, we can even do a forensic audit and find ways for you to get money back, like 3121 alternative to FICA. These are programs that were established by the federal government to help employers like yourself not pay FICA. So what happens when you don't have to match it? You keep it. Those monies, now you can buy a bus, you can use it to buy other things like employer-paid products. I work with school districts throughout the state of Texas, but the ones that really listen and say, "You know what, Gil? Give me your creative thought, and I have this much money to work with," after I find those 3121 monies, I've been very successful to say, "You know what, sir, superintendent, board president, board members, I will go do that." Then I come back and says, "Okay." With this amount of money, I can increase your level of basic life insurance instead of twenty-five or ten thousand, I can increase it to fifty thousand. In the case of Vanguard Academy, one of your neighbors, Dr. Garcia and his board, the superintendent there, he asked me, "Can you do the same thing for us?" I said, "Sure." I increased their, their basic life insurance to pay to their beneficiary of the employee, a hundred thousand. If you die in an accident, it's two hundred thousand. They also have employer-paid disability insurance. They also have employer-paid vision, employer-paid dental. This creativity comes from our size, our ability to go out and negotiate on your behalf, and we've been very successful. Our retention rate at our company is ninety-nine percent. We don't lose clients. We, we just earn our, our respect and our business through our hard work. Now, when it comes to the voluntary products, we only work with A-rated companies. So we protect the integrity of the school district and its, and its employees. One thing that saves a lot of money for the school district is that we will provide you section administration, section one-twenty-five administration, HSAs, FSAs, HRAs at no cost. We will also provide corporate administration, both federal and state, at no cost. Remember I was telling you, as a third-party administrator, and everyone that comes after me, you can ask them, "Are you a third-party administrator?" No. I know my business because I've been doing it for twenty-seven years and everything that you see there is what sets us apart from our competitors. A call center that you see there is very distinct and very new to our business. We started that thirteen years ago. That call center allows your district employees to enroll face-to-face. Use a call center for those individuals that want access after hours to talk to a professional like me, to have their parrot or their, their loved one next to them and ask in the language that they understand because we speak in English, Spanish, Korean. We also are there to help them guide electronically because our enrollment platform, our technology, you can enroll with your phone, your iPad, your, your laptop. So it provides a full enrollment education platform for your demographics found within your school district and your community. Now we have Generation X, we have Baby Boomers, we have Millennials, and they all learn to listen and talk to each other differently, right? We respect that, we understand that. Every single aspect of what we do, our billing and reconciliation, is what we're also known for. It's at no cost. We will remove all the, the responsibility and liability off of Mrs. Matas' business office and the HR office, offer their, 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 their responsibility. We also do, our enrollment management is, is sponsored by HR. Our HR services, again, come at no cost to the district. The district actually saves money because your employees are not working as hard and working overtime. Why are we the best fit? Because we're very secure, we're very well-known throughout the state of Texas. But now that we merge with Higobacum, Higobacum was one of the largest brokers in the United States. We just merged with them this past October, making us one of the largest TPAs in the state, but also in the nation. So we are, we're head and shoulders above our competitors in our technology, our services, every aspect of our employee benefits that we provide to you, from medical to voluntary employee benefits. We also do student insurance, property and casualty, cybersecurity. We're the leaders of these services. And again, we do this at no cost. We, we have historically saved every single client in this past year around average between twenty to twenty-five percent on premium. We have been very effective, in fact, in Vanguard, they saw a rate decrease of two percent on their medical insurance. Cow Allen, Tulosso Midway, districts that are similar in your size, they seen significant savings by working with us. Not only that, that we have removed a lot of work effort on their part. What are your questions?
Mr. Gonzalez, it's always a pleasure to see you.
It's, thank you.
Good to see you again. Just a couple of questions that come up, and that was a very good presentation. Thank you for your time. When you mentioned that, that you're, the company that services fifteen out of twenty service centers, is Region One included in there?
I'm in negotiations with them right now. I just had their meeting last week. Currently, I do have some products in Region One. The advantage of them working with us is because many of the school districts that are part of Region One are going to Region Two for their Coastal Bend Cooperative, like Lyford, Webb CISD, Brooks County, San Pelita. These accounts, La Villa, Monte Alto, these accounts, by joining forces with the Coastal Bend Cooperative, that leverage, if they stand alone like La Villa, it's only a hundred and twenty employees. But when they join the Coastal Bend Cooperative, now you're seven thousand employees. So the purchasing power of that union and that collaboration, working with us, saves them significant savings. In fact, that creativity that I was talking about was Webb CISD, where they pay for hospital indemnity for each employee. So they have TRS Medical, they're responsible for their deductible and their out-of-pocket. Well, they added hospital indemnity, so making their medical insurance almost seamless. So the employee and their family members don't have to pay for that. So we are experts in medical insurance, four-fifty-seven, thirty-one-twenty-one, every aspect of employee benefits that you ever thought about.
Thank you, sir. Board members, any other questions?
I have a quick question. Mr. Gonzalez, you said that on one of the pages you showed that you're servicing Los Fresnos and some of the surrounding.
Yes, sir.
How long have you been servicing them?
Los Fresnos, I would say around nine years. Lyford, around eight. San Pelita, four. La Villa, one. Monte Alto, one. These are acquisitions that have been occurring now. I used to be employed by First Financial Group of America. I left them in twenty sixteen. At the, at twenty sixteen, I went to become a regional vice president for FBMC. A year later, I came to work with FBS. So in that five-year tenure, we, the Region Two Cooperative, Cow Allen, Tulosso Midway, and others have been acquired within those five-year period.
Thank you. So I got a question for you. I mean, your, your technology is amazing and the investment in your technology is, is, is great. How do you integrate that with, with the staff and how long is your, the learning curve? Once you, once you're into a school system, what kind of tools do you use to educate your staff? I mean, educate the staff on, on how to use your, your operation?
Mr. Lopez, thank you. That is a great question. We have an EDU part of our implementation process. When we bring in San Bernardino Administration, they attend a block of instruction. They have four blocks of instruction, each being fifteen minutes. It, it's called the Benefits Hub EDU. And we send them to train that enrollment platform. It's like learning how to drive a brand-new car. We wanna make sure you know where the, the park, the drive, and everything, the, the horn. We wanna make sure that you understand how to drive this vehicle to be very self-sufficient, but also to build upon it. Out of our five hundred and ten clients, we have an annual event each year where we invite all of our clients to come and share their best practices. Your administration will also be invited to attend and they see best practices that are occurring in Fort Worth ISD and other surrounding school districts that they have something in common. Because you also need to think about what payroll system are you operating in. But our focus, again, going back to my family, my mom used this hand to teach me. And that was the most important lesson in you being an educator, as an educating group. We have that in common. Education is the key. The more you educate, the more you free people to become bigger and better in their future. We provide an Insurance 101 for our platform so they can truly understand how to use it. Every year during that enrollment training, we find individuals, especially when we start doing staff presentations, we find that many of the employees have spouses elsewhere. They work at Magic Valley, they work at HEB. But though, because they work so hard at their job, they might not communicate effectively to know if they're being double-deducted for the same product, like disability or accident or cancer. We have a, a opportunity with the call center to set up meetings on Saturday, too. Our call center goes from Monday through Saturday. On Saturday, we call that Breakfast with Gil, and it goes from nine AM to one PM. And all we talk about there is financial awareness, how to use, tricks of the trade, things that you should be asking your doctor. Many a times, we forget that we, as patients, have rights when we go visit our dentist, our orthodont, orthodontist, or... We forget to ask questions. So we remind people, we arm people with the education that they need to ask questions. But excellent question, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Any other questions, board members?
These apps, are they just English or are there other languages provided?
We, right now, I've seen forty-seven, forty-seven different languages. Yeah. But here, in the Pasadena-Houston area, there's an average of seven languages being utilized through this app. But you can pick whatever language you want, it's recognized. In fact, it's very well-
Now, the app, is it, is it optional or is it required for them to have it if they're gonna have this insurance so they can access their insurance information?
No, as a matter of fact, it has so much freedom that the employee is in control of how they get educated, how they're communicated, and they have a lot of freedom. It's the employee that now has the control on how he gets, he or she receives services. So it's really in, in, in the touch of a screen by the employee and the family members. Had a case where, I had it presented in Korean. And I was presenting in Korean, I used to live in Korea for two and a half years, I was on the DMZ. And so I knew enough words, but I did get stuck where I just turned on the app and the app did the work for me. I was like, "Oh, wow." I was very impressed. I knew then, I was like, "Wow, I, I found a home in FBS." But yes, the employee has the ability to pick and choose what language they wanna communicate in.
Okay. And I'm assuming you have a hotline or a phone number that they can call? How accessible is that to employees?
We have a care center, it's part of our call center. The care center stays on, we have three-hundred-and-sixty-five day coverage. But our app, our technology captures questions and concerns and we, we respond immediately. For the past twenty-seven years, I've been giving out my cellphone. I answer phone calls at one-thirty in the morning. I remember when I was in Zapata, one of the Zapata ISD employees had a, an accident in Laredo. I get a call at one-thirty in the morning and it was that individual that was, couldn't remember, they just had a horrific accident, they were in the hospital. So he had my phone number. The, all my clients have my phone numbers, the employees have my phone numbers. I pick up at one-thirty. I'll tell you a funny story. My wife, we were just recently married, we're like sixty years married, she thought I had a Sancha. And I was like, "Babe, no." And she finally heard the conversation on the speaker, it was a hospital administrator, and she heard everything. I've been together with my wife since ninth, ninth grade, happily married. And my, my wife's the executive director for Teach for America, I'm very proud, so I would never have one, just for the record. But yes, I'm very proud of how we respond. You have a lot of local representation here in the valley. Our staff is, is humongous. We have our McAllen office in Hig with Higobacum and they have around twenty-five employees. We ourselves have eight representatives that do the enrollment with the San Bernardino ISD. I always say, "Kill them with kindness." Provide over customer service to make sure that we educate. So when we come here, we come with an army, an army that's full of people like me who have years of experience to ensure that we're educating not just the employee, but their family. Now, we are very solvent. We, I know in the past, somebody says, "How are you guys doing financially?" We have never declared bankruptcy, we are very strong. In fact, we're so, we're growing so much in the month of December, just here, we're approximately gonna acquire six other clients. So the popularity to us is that we're, we're the second-largest medical provider under TRS Medical. We have an alternative to TRS medical insurance called the Texas School Health Benefits Program. And we represent over a hundred and sixty-eight medical self-funded or level-funded plans.
And you have your office here in San Bernardino?
We will, we working with Pete Clavio. I've known Pete Clavio for many years. We have always been great associates and better friends. He has talked with the president of the company and says that his office is the office of FBS and we're ready to serve your employees and families out of his office. And I'm very proud to be associated with Pete Clavio, a very respected young man here in the community.
Do you have the cost of what the benefits would cost our employees?
I always look at that cost when I take you out to market. Let's say you were to hire me. My first job, and I'm not alone when, as a consultant, I have a Kevin McCarthy, I have a Braun, and I have a Russ Edwards. We have a team of four consultants and Russ Edwards is renowned throughout the state of Texas as a risk manager and he actually manages our Texas School Health Benefits Program. We would take you out to the market and it wouldn't cost San Bernardino ISD any work effort or funds out of your pocket. We take you out and it's protected by our contracts that we have with you. In fact, if you look inside that employee, that brochure I gave you, inside the first page on the right, bottom right, that, the, it has allied states cooperative, pace cooperative, choice partners. Those are cooperatives that we use to go find products that are best suited for your district and your community. Those same cooperatives, you're already members of. You do not need to go out to bid to acquire us because we are the stewards of those cooperatives. So acquiring us as a TPA would be the easiest thing that San Bernardino ISD ever did. In fact, you would save money by working with an FBS because we are a true party, third-party administrator.
I would like to see, I would encourage the board, because I won't be here next time, but I would encourage the board to get a list of what the benefits and the costs would be. One of the things that we did when we came in as a board majority is we did change our insurance only because our employees were being charged almost double of what the other insurance was giving us. And so that would be something that I, I would wanna see myself as a board trustee, but I won't be here next Tuesday. So that's something that I, I would think that would be beneficial for our Board of Trustees to see as well.
I agree with you, Mrs. Lopez. In fact, we have a proven record throughout our tenure and operation where we have worked, for instance, at a nearby school district where some of these competitors wanted the same proposal and I came in at half their rate only because of our leverage and our name-brand recognition. Because if they work with us here, they'll have access to the five hundred and ten school districts.
And of course, with, without hindering the benefits that they would get.
Yes. In my twenty-seven years, I've never delivered a rate increase. Let me say that again. In my twenty-seven years of doing what I'm doing, I've never delivered a rate increase. How many times have you, as school board leader members, seen a rate increase that you had to pass along to your employees? My mom taught me a lot with this hand. She also showed me discipline. The discipline and understanding that education means a lot, means that I, as a representative of San Bernardino ISD, if you do elect to hire us, we work diligently to get you the very best and then help work with your administration team to be creative, to find ways to stand apart from your neighbors. Because every year, you're struggling to find educators and you're competing with your neighbors. Our job at FBS is to find you that competitive edge. We are that competitive edge.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Congratulations, man.
Sir, I think what you said is extremely key because as we're self-funded, it's a balance. You know, yeah, we do have a new agent of record, but this year, we had, we've seen an increase.
Yes.
You know, in our insurance toward the school district, so we're having to pay more. So I think, you know, you hit on a couple of key things, you know, of course, everything, but, you know, I think one of the things is, 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 you know, just having a balance to where, you know, we provide our staff with the best insurance, you know, umbrella, but also, you know, the cost, the cost-wise, it's we're self-funded, we, we control our own insurance situations. I think that's very important to, to note as well. So, so, yeah, so, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, have a good evening, it was a pleasure to be here. It was a pleasure to be here.
Good to see you again. Mr. Cavasov? Mr. Clavio, thank you.
Thank you. Let me have one. May I want to give some over here to them? Good evening, Mr. Moreno, board president, all of the board members. I don't know your names here. My son was supposed to come and do this presentation, but he came down with COVID yesterday. So, sir? No, sir, I was not. No, I was not. No, no, sir. I haven't been around here for a while. I'm here tonight to present on who we are and what we provide. I've been in the business twenty-two years. We've been providing service. Most of the people that will be speaking tonight and the people that do what we do provide benefits. And I like to say that we provide service. A lot of our times, a lot of times, all of the employees that work for you do not understand. This is, insurance is a very difficult thing to understand. And when somebody wants to make a claim and you have to call an 800 number, and they don't call back, and then they come to central office, and then it's a hard, difficult thing. So, I've, I've found out that in all the years I've been doing this, I coached thirty-two years. And I found out with Richard Flores in Edinburgh. And I learned a lot of good things. And I put those things that I learned coaching here. And you have to keep everybody happy. And it's a difficult thing. Takes a lot of work. So, I'm not going to come up here and tell you about numbers and benefits. And most of them are pretty close to the same, I believe. But we provide something a little bit differently than most, most companies that do this. I work with Voya. And we work, we're a broker. And we use all of the companies that are out there right now. But we're a little bit different in the fact that, I'm going to talk about financials first. What you have before you in front, when we sit down with a teacher or a cafeteria worker or a bus driver, to us, they're all the same and important because they all have a job to do for the district. We show them this. Where are you at in your life right now? Do you, are you protected from, for this or for that? How many children do you have? Are you married? Are you single? Are you living with your parents? These things are important because you're trying to give them what they need. You don't want to sell them a life insurance policy for a hundred thousand dollars to someone who's living at home and just got started teaching. They don't have any beneficiaries. So, this is a very good thing that we, that I've developed on this, been working on this for twenty years. And I'm trying to make it into a cartoon where you can just follow the guy going up and see what's happening. But the difference between us and most people in this business is that we provide financials. Okay, what is that, financials? Well, we have retired over five, probably getting close to six thousand school employees all over the state of Texas since 2000. We provide a service, not only on the benefit side, but on the financial side because most of us don't understand that either. In the old days, we did everything at the bank. You took us to the bank, you opened your checking account. When you had enough in there, you could borrow. And if you made money, you put it in a CD, and everything was at the bank. Things are changing now. But when it comes to retirement, teachers work thirty-five years, and they don't understand a thing about their retirement. Who do they turn to? Well, this is where we separate ourselves from everyone else. Currently, right now, we're in the University of Texas system. We're in the Texas A&amp;M system, South Texas College system. And we provide financial services for those entities. Currently, on the benefit side, which is what you all are looking for right now, we're currently in the city of Edinburgh, Hidalgo County, Sherlin ISD, and Edinburgh CISD, where we've been since 2005. We provide service to all of these employees, whether it's on the financial side. They get to know us. We help them with their retirement. We order their packets. We do all these things for the employees, and we don't charge a dime. We don't charge a dime. Never have. I got paid one time, y'all, from Edinburgh. One of my employees gave us, gave me a hamburger king, fried chicken. He brought it to my office. And that's about the only thing I've ever taken, aside from a few cakes. But I can tell you, it's, I've been there. I lived that. I coached thirty-two. I went through the whole system. And I saw when we were doing all this, teachers are lost. So, what we like to do is come into the district, provide everything. We currently just added in Edinburgh, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the 529 College America Plan? You save money, your teachers can save money for college because most teachers don't qualify for scholarships. Their kids don't. So, it's a plan where you start to save money. It doesn't have anything to do with the district because it's taken from their checking. And then, when their kids are ready to go to college, they don't pay taxes on the money or the growth that it had. We just, we're the first, Edinburgh is the first school district in the United States that have a 529 plan. And we don't, we don't charge a fee for that. They don't pay fees. Hundred percent of their money goes for their kids. We're adding that as a service because we've been there so long. Took me a while to get that set up, but we're doing it now. We also provide a 457 plan. What is the 457 plan? 457 plan, right now, if you have a 403B or a 401K or any kind of retirement plan, you have to wait till you're fifty-nine and a half. But if you've got a 457 plan in your school district and somebody retires at forty, at fifty, they have access to their money. They just pay taxes. That's it. They don't have to wait till they're fifty-nine and a half. So, a lot of teachers, my average retiree is about fifty-four, fifty-three and a half, fifty-four. They can't touch their money for five years. I'm talking about 403B or 450. When you get a 457, then they have access to it right away. These are in all state plans, cities, DPS. All state plans have 457. At the university, there's 457. We have one in Edinburgh.
Is there any penalties for drawing early?
There is certain qualifications. You cannot withdraw from any retirement plan. 403B, 457, Social Security, TRS, TMRS, any of those. You have to wait until you separate from service. If you become disabled, of course, if you pass, your family gets, your beneficiaries get it. But there is, most of our teachers don't know anything about this. They're lost. They don't understand TRS. A lot of people get out of TRS, take their money out. Then they come back to teach, and then they lost all those years. Nobody, nobody teaches them or tells them. And they make a lot of mistakes, especially at retirement. TRS got a little, doesn't give you your health insurance information. They mail it to you. People don't know what it is. They won't qualify for health insurance. We don't charge for any of this. I love doing this. We, you know, it's a great thing to see somebody work thirty-five years and help them retire. And they have everything that they need. So, that's something that we provide at no cost to the employees. Okay, so now, let's talk a little bit about benefits. Let's talk about benefits. Okay. I work with a very big company. Voya, it used to be a lion, but now we have a paper squirrel for our commercials, and it kind of broke my heart with that. But we just purchased Benefitfocus. Benefitfocus is the TPA for the University of Texas and most of the, most of the big universities across the state. They do something that most TPAs can't do. They help to, they help to reconcile each month the expenses from your health insurance. Currently, nobody does that. Nobody does that right now. So, you could, a doctor could be billing this, that. It's very difficult to manage health insurance. It is a very difficult thing. And most districts, we're going to provide, we have several TPAs that we can use. We use Babe Bridge out of Austin, which is in fifty states across the country. We use, now, we'll be using Benefitfocus. First, we have access to many TPAs, depending on what you all need. What is it that you want and what you need? I think that we can provide that for you. We also work, of course, when you work with benefits, you work with the FSA accounts, COBRA, Cafeteria 125 Administration. All those things are part of a package. We have eight or nine employees in our office that help service all our accounts. And we also have agents that come in. And all of your new employees that come in, we come and enroll them. Okay? That's a very important thing. They don't do it on their own. A lot of school districts will let, "Hey, we already enrolled, so anybody that's coming in, you enroll on your own." So, we also have a group. We've had as many as thirty, thirty-five enrollers enroll in different places at different times. So, we have access to all of that. It's, we are here, and I'll say it again and over and over again. We are here to serve the employees of this district with everything that they may need to know. If you look on the very top, we know everything about Social Security. Aaron Ramírez, one of my employees, he's a certified financial planner. Also deals with Medicare. Very important for our employees that can't afford their TRS care insurance. So, we want to come to your district and not just provide benefits. Here's an 800 number. It'll work. We're here to provide service. People call, we don't give you an 800 number. We give you our number. And we want to be in the middle of their claim, whatever it might be. And so, you can look at this thing right here, and it looks real complicated. If you look on the top-left side, there's leading causes of death. And you see accident up there for the first two age groups. That's who needs an accident plan. Somebody who's young, who needs a cancer plan. Just about everybody, because everybody's affected by cancer. So, we explain all these things to everyone, especially the one right there with that little upside guy, premature death. What happens if you're gone? And I lived that because I lost my wife when she was forty-four years old. She was a teacher. So, you experience all these things, and you do all these claims, and you learn a lot, that every individual is different as far as providing benefits. And their retirement plans are all different. Nobody's the same. And if you would give us the opportunity to come here and share our knowledge that we have accumulated over all of these years, I'm just telling you that, that we come from a different angle. From a different angle. We're just not going to sell you benefits and give you an 800 number. We're here to serve your employees. And I'll entertain any questions right now. I like, Coach Flores always used the kiss, "Keep it simple, silly." So, I wasn't going to come out here with a presentation, and some of you don't, maybe not be able to catch on with this. It's a lot of information. I like to cut the chase and get right to it. We're going to be here for your staff. Is there any questions?
Board members, any questions?
Where's your office?
We have an office in Edinburgh. But if we, we're also looking at expanding this way here because we're looking at, this year, I think we're going to be expanding more. And we have the capabilities of doing that. We would probably look for some agents that were here, just have an office here. But we have no problems driving up here. We drive Austin, all over the place. Okay? So, I want to also take this time to thank you for your service, for your community. A lot of times, you guys are back there, and then nobody pats you on the back. And if I learned anything, you always got to pat guys like you that do this for nothing. And you care about your community. And we care about the people that work for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Fine, thank you. There we go. Now I can see. Good evening, distinguished school board, as well as superintendent serving on. My name is Shauna Robinson. I'm the vice president at Barrett Insurance. And my partner is Pierre Newkirk with Newkirk and Newkirk. He can't be with us here this evening. He is in Houston with a wife that's having surgery. So, that would be the only reason Pierre would not be here. So, he sends his apologies. But he'll be our partner on this case. I'm going to go ahead and, there, can everybody see that, I hope? And then you've got a copy as well. I'm going to go ahead and jump right in and get started and just kind of tell you a little bit about what Barrett Insurance and Newkirk and Newkirk do. We are partners with several different school districts and have had great success so far in really being able to manage the spend as well as provide access and real insurance to every single employee, which is really what our main focus is with all of our clients. Can you go to the next one for me? Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. About us, we've been around for a long time, since nineteen fifty-eight, over sixty-six years. Robert Barrett was the very first Hispanic insurance agent in San Antonio, Texas. And his son took it over in nineteen eighty and has remained as my business partner. Newkirk and Newkirk was founded in nineteen ninety-two. We are very fortunate to have every license represented. So, what that really does is gives you a one-stop shop. I know you all are looking for a broker. I know you all are looking for a broker. We not only can represent you as a broker, as consultant, and then any questions that you might have on workman's comp, on your Series Six, on your 401Ks, on your property and casualty, although you have those with other carriers, we're able to just assist you and offer any advice on that as well. These are just some of our team members to kind of put a face with the name. We have several different account executives, we have an IT specialist, communications and marketing, as well as there's Pierre there. And then he has an entire team as well of seventeen. A snapshot of some of our current clients, I know that's always something very important when you're making decisions of this kind, is to know who all do we represent and how long have we been around. Agua is our newest client here in the valley. We also have Edinburgh here in the valley, Hidalgo, as well as Azariah. And working with another one that we hope to be able to announce in the next couple of weeks. Carizo Springs is one of our clients. We have San Antonio Independent School District, Somerset Southwest ISD, and South Side ISD as well, located in San Antonio. We are very proud to be able to represent everything that a national firm can represent, yet we're local. We have ties here in the community. Pierre's office is located in McAllen. We're located in San Antonio, but I am here once a week. I'm typically here to two to three days per week, depending on what all I need to do while I'm here. I meet frequently with employees, maybe, that have an issue with their medical coverage or one of their other benefits, as well as we're a phone call away. And we have a representative that comes once a month also to enroll any new employees that our clients may have. We believe that needs to be a one-on-one personal experience. We want you to be able to sit with somebody that is a licensed broker and actually knows what different benefits bring to the table, hopefully lowering the cost for the employees, as well as adding extra benefits that would be able to cover up that deductible at a very inexpensive cost. We have legal services on our team. We have an information system. We have an enrollment system that comes at no cost whatsoever to the district that we run ourselves. We have data analytics. We have an actuarial that we utilize as well. And we have all of the benefits enrollment system and a communications team. Our goal, whoops, sorry about that. Our goal is always to exceed your expectations. So, what do I mean by that? I mean, we want to stay in front of everything. We believe in quarterly reporting. We want to make sure that you know exactly where your spend is and any challenges that we may have and what we can do to adjust them throughout the year, so that doesn't end up being an end-of-the-year crisis management where you end up in the red on your medical spend. We take great pride in having most all of our clients that either received a reduction this year or if they're self-funded or self-insured, they actually have a nice positive balance in their account that we're actually rolling over for the next year. We have the administrative system that I talked about. We have plan designs. So, we actually sit down and not only do we RFP, but then we go through them and then we retailer, what does that plan design look like? Let me give you a really good example. Carizo Springs joined us in September, so we started RFPing them in February. We knew that the local hospital was a great place where we could really be innovative and then, most importantly, be able to assist the employees to have healthcare when they needed it. So, we were able to work with them, redesign the plan. And they have a zero deductible if they utilize the hospital. That's not just for surgeries, inpatient surgeries outpatient, but for all imaging and any lab work. They have a zero copay if they go see any of the doctors that are affiliated, as well as the specialist. So, what we've been able to do is drive people to go get the care that they've needed that they haven't been able to afford in the past. So, we're able to catch things earlier, as well as be able to give them imaging. You know, right now, if you go get any kind of imaging, I met with an employee today from Hidalgo that we're trying to help her with one of her bills, twelve hundred dollars is a typical MRI. Most people don't have that. And until you reach that three thousand dollar deductible, that twelve hundred is coming out of your pocket. So, being able to give them those benefits right there at the hospital, which is about two miles away from the school district, has really changed the dynamics of the healthcare needs that they have. We also have employee education. We're able to utilize a system that we have, a texting system, to be able to send out messages at any time to every single employee. We've done lots and lots of research through our communications department. And what we found, probably just like everybody sitting in this room, is that text is the easiest way to get to somebody and for them to read something quickly and then be able to respond. So, we created and purchased a plan and a system where it generates a text that goes to every single employee at the district if there's something they need to share, or if there's something that we need to share to include a monthly wellness message, so that we remind people that if they get in to see their doctors, they need to have a family practice home, as well as, just as importantly, they need to have their annual screenings. We also take care of your COBRA, any HIPAA regulations, FMLA, your section one twenty-five. And any folks that have Medicare or are getting close to Medicare that are employees of your district, we help them get enrolled, we help them choose the best plan, and we help them roll off your plan. Because as we all know, if you don't go ahead and join ninety days prior or ninety days after your birthday when you turn sixty-five, then you're penalized. So, we want to make sure that all of those employees know that as well and take advantage of that. Newkirk and Newkirk, Barrett Innovation. We use a strategy of comprehensive, full-service package benefits. So, we bring the entire package and really look at your employees much more uniquely. We want to look at them holistically and be able to help them in every facet of what they would need through their entire benefit package. We use pharmaceutical analysis and immediate savings tools where employees can actually get their medication for free if they make under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and their medications cost over a thousand total for the entire year. And for any of you that are diabetic, we know what those drugs look like. I am a proud mother of a diabetic daughter. And so, we are always trying to get innovative with her medications and the cost. We understand narrow networks, we've designed them ourselves. We have direct contracting. For example, the Carizo Springs addition that we added there to their local hospital. We have wellness initiatives. We are big believers in a biometric screening. We don't make it mandatory, but it sure is nice to find those folks that didn't know that they had high blood pressure and high cholesterol and be able to assist them getting the medication they need. I tell everybody, you're never going to find me at Gold's Gym. You might find me in front of my television doing a workout first thing in the morning, or I might go walk my dog. But I'm certainly going to take the medications that I need, as long as they're affordable and I can access them. And we make sure that all your employees are able to do that. Value-based pricing, data analytics, onsite and nearsite clinics. Not everybody can afford an onsite clinic. We actually have four of our school districts that have actually implemented them. If you don't have an onsite clinic, or that's something that you don't have a large enough population to provide, then we provide a nearsighted clinic. I drove around your neighborhood for a couple of hours before I came in this evening and was able to point out several doctors that were in about a two-mile vicinity. We would go to those doctors and ask them if they'd be willing to see your employees at zero copay and then also hold spots for them on a daily basis so that they would have instant access should they start feeling bad. We know that the earlier you can get in, the earlier we can keep you back in the classroom, back on the school bus, or in the maintenance department. Proprietary benefit solutions, as well as we audit and make sure that your bills truly are what they're supposed to be and that you're getting all of your rebates, as well as your pharmaceutical returns and your stop-loss money. Narrow networks, we do very well. I came from Baptist, I was an executive for fourteen years in San Antonio and had the pleasure of overseeing the wellness program here in the valley as well. And with that, I designed many narrow networks. We actually have one in San Antonio through the Baptist Healthcare System with one of the ACOs. And basically, that's just bringing your very best doctors in your area that have the very best outcomes together. And so, they reduce their prices as long as we can help assist them with volume. So, that's just something that we're also subject experts in. We are currently working with Aetna, United, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Cigna that all have narrow networks. Yet at the same time, they're all PPOs, and we give employees the choice of which network they want to choose. Direct contracting, very similar to a narrow network, but we're actually going to those physical hospital systems, surgery centers, or physicians, and do a direct contract. So, what are we doing? We're getting very best price. Typically, with any kind of medical carrier that you have, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Aetna, Cigna, United, you're going to pay about two-hundred percent of Medicare bills, right? That's typically how everybody does their pricing, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We have been averaging right at sixty-five to a hundred percent of Medicare billing. So, what that does is it takes that cost off of the top of what your employees are having to pay for that deductible, as well as what's coming out of your plan as well. Hopefully, not only reducing your total spend, but providing you a premium reduction the following year. Wellness, this is one of my favorites, and I am a subject expert. I had fourteen wellness clinics when I was in San Antonio at the Baptist Healthcare System that we opened. We were able to reduce one of our clients that had twelve hundred employees. They had a spend of a million dollar, a million two dollars on emergency room visits alone. So, we all know what that means, is everybody was using the emergency room as their family practice home instead of seeking one out and actually finding the right care at right time, is the way that we like to describe it. We put in an onsite clinic for them, and mind you, they had thirteen facilities across San Antonio. But we were able to communicate it, we were able to make it a convenient location and give them time to be able to go and utilize the services. That we went from twelve hundred and thirty-eight visits in one year to two hundred and two visits the following year in the emergency room. Something that we really track and that we believe is very important, because coming from a hospital system, somebody walked through the emergency room, we always said cha-ching, cha-ching, seventeen hundred dollars, just walked through the room, whether you were coming in for a sinus infection or you were actually having a heart attack. So, we educate people on why they need to go to the emergency room and why they don't, and then we track that. And then we reach out to those folks, if they're high utilizers, and find out what it is that they need and see if we need to pair them up with a physician or a specialist, so that we can get them out of the emergency room. And help people understand that the more that they use the emergency room when it's really not necessary, is the more they're driving up the plan and the premiums for everybody. All of their counterparts and everybody that they're sitting around the room with when they're having lunch. So, just try to do a lot of education. We do a smoking surcharge in some of our districts, sometimes that's popular, sometimes it's not. Biometric screenings, we feel like are extremely important. I can tell you, New Braunfels Utility is one of our clients. They have four hundred employees, most of them men, most of them twenty-two to thirty years old. We drove twenty-seven people to the hospital because their blood pressure was over two hundred and fifty. So, it's amazing what you find out when we prick your finger. It takes a matter of seconds, it's not invasive, but it can tell you a whole lot of information. We don't ever collect that ourselves, because we feel like that's private. But it's always that aha moment for those employees, and then we are there, ready to help guide them to the facility that they need or the doctor's office they need, as well as moving them up for an appointment should we need to do that, so that they can get the care and the medicines that they need. Weight management, that's important for all of us, and something that I know I struggle with, as well as diabetes management. Something else that we've done in the diabetes management is recognizing that we have a large percentage in San Antonio, we have a large percentage in the valley, we have a large percentage in Carizo Springs. So, we make sure that whenever we design the plan with our carriers, that we are building in not only the diabetic strips, but the insulin pumps. We're making sure that people can wear the sensors on their arms and make sure that they actually know how to use all of those different pieces as well. It's amazing when we can get your A1, C1 to a six and you're actually managing. Not only do you feel better, you actually come to work and are much more active with your own family and cost a whole lot less. The last thing we want is somebody that has not managed their diabetes to end up in the emergency room and then the ICU. I tell everybody, the most expensive bed you'll ever lay in is called an ICU, and it costs about twelve thousand dollars a night. So, it doesn't help your plan and it doesn't help your pocketbook. So, what can we do to make sure you have access to your medicines, make sure you know what your blood sugar is? Something as simple as polling your employees that are diabetic, see if they have a pump or if they don't. If they do, and we find out the majority all have a pump, then we go to that manufacturer, see if we can get a reduced cost on that. It's called the power of volume. We do the same thing in the OR where I came from. Knee replacements were a lot less expensive, we got them all from the same vendor, as long as we knew it was one of the very best. So, it's just being innovative, really reviewing your materials. We do a lot of zip code checks to find out where your employees live. So, we're making sure that we're managing and we are assessing the doctors, as well as the medical facilities that they use, to make sure we have very best pricing. Data analytics, I love analytics. My family calls me an insurance nerd, because this is what I talk about at the dinner table. Pharmaceutical utilization, we go through it all the time. What do I want to know? I want to know what drugs are we buying? What are the ones that are the most expensive and why? Do we need to change the formulary? You can change any formulary in sixty days if you have a large amount of people that are all utilizing the same medication and it is not either one of your in-brand, in-formulary, or if it's a specialty that we can get at a reduced price due to volume. So, there are many ways to be able to utilize the medications that you need without having to remove something from somebody that's already using it, as long as we're reviewing that information. We also like to be really proactive. So, we do a lot of questionnaires when we do enrollment. We're asking people, who are your doctors, what medications do you utilize? So, we make sure, prior to putting in a new plan, that all of those, or at least the majority of those, are all going to be in-network, so that people don't have to change their doctors. We always want to minimize disruption. Utilization trends, problem diseases, as well as facility charges. We do a good job of going through all of those when we have a new client and make sure that we're on top of it and we start to negotiate day one. Pharmacy management, one of my absolute favorites. Another thing that we do with those nearsite clinics is we have people's medications sent to the clinic instead of waiting on them to go pick it up. The number one reason people don't take their medication, according to all of the different surveys, is they can't afford it. So, if we make sure you can afford it and we make sure you understand how to take it, compliance goes way up. And if you're not compliant and you don't take it when you're supposed to, you end up back in the ER and back in the ICU. See that vicious circle that starts over and goes round and round? So, we do a really good job of managing your pharmaceutical spend. We have clinical initiatives to be able to control those and create flexibility, increase compliance. We want to make sure you're taking your medication, you know how to take it. Direct medications to employees, pharmaceutical expenses where we can lower them by removing them from your entire plan, by using those manufacturer plans where it actually arrives at your home for free, if you make under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And contracting pharmaceuticals outside medical carriers. Possible recommendations of things that might be an option for you all after going through the benefits that you currently have. Analyze and enhance current pharmaceutical utilization. Narrow the current benefit options. Introduce and implement Wellvanna. They actually reach out and ask people if they've had a doctor visit in the last year. They ask them if they have a physician home. Most people don't know what that means. That means, do you have a primary care doctor you can call if you get sick that's actually going to see you in a reasonable amount of time? Have you had an annual physical? And then they actually help them book the appointment, so that they stay within the network, and then they actually send them a friendly reminder. And then they do a follow-up to make sure that they showed up and that they understood what they heard. Introduce and implement, add nearsighted clinics. Offer and support telemedicine health. I don't know if you all have that plan currently, I'm sure that you do. We encourage everyone to use it. We encourage everyone to put that phone number in their phone the day that we actually do the onsite trainings, so that people know where it is and don't have to go dick for it, never fails. My husband ended up with COVID on vacation this summer. So, as soon as we got back, which was the following day, we're searching for that little handy-dandy book that had the phone number in it. So, that was a quick reminder, I wasn't doing what I tell my own employees to do, right? The minute you have that employee session, everybody needs to be putting that number in their phone, so that they have it, and it's easy and accessible. We also provide telemental health. We know that that is a crisis across the country. I can tell you, it is a crisis in Texas. So, we want to make sure that people have access to the care that they need when they need it and that they can have that private conversation and hopefully be able to then to get the medications as well that are life-changing for so many. Implement aggressive wellness programs, sometimes that's something that people aren't ready for. So, we do that and work with different districts and clients as we move along. Add Medicare-based pricing to out-of-network claims. HDHP benefit, and then we convert employees to an HDHP network. But what we do with that is I don't want anybody not to have access to the meds that they need. So, there are many HDHP plans where you can overlay a pharmaceutical benefit from the day one. Hundred ninety-eight drugs are called emergent drugs, and they're really for your chronic management, your high blood pressure, your high cholesterol, your diabetes. Those are all overlaid in the HDHP plan, they cost your employees absolutely nothing, and they have access to all hundred ninety-eight from day one, instead of having to reach that three thousand dollar deductible before they have benefits. So, we make sure that we incorporate that everywhere. Once again, it's all about having access to healthcare when you need it, as well as being able to take the medications. And last but not least, what are the differences that we provide? We are committed to representing every single employee. We want to make sure that the bus driver, that the maintenance, that your cafeteria staff, as well as your teachers and your superintendent can all afford their benefits and understand them. We have proprietary products that lower the cost for employees. We have concierge enrollment. So, prior to actually doing enrolling, we come onsite and do information sessions at every single department and every single school. We encourage principals to, when they are having a big meeting with all of their staff, to let us join them. It takes about ten to fifteen minutes. We go through whatever the benefits are going to be for this year, even if they're the same as last year. We like to give the friendly reminder, you've got to re-enroll for your FSA every year, or your HSA, should you have one. Sometimes people's medical benefits need to change, should their utilization have changed the year before, whether it has gone up or gone down. As well as, we like to remind them of other benefits that can help reduce that deductible. Then we come back and we actually do enrollment with every single person. They get a book, it's in Spanish and English, and they get that about two weeks prior to enrollment, so they can take that home and share that with their spouse or their significant other and make sure that their benefits are just as beneficial as they thought they were. And then that way, it also has all of the information of every single carrier, all the phone numbers. phone numbers and any paperwork they might need to actually submit a claim so that they don't have to go looking for that should they need it. My husband fell out of a tree this summer in May, cutting down a limb and ended up with a big gash on his head, a severe concussion, two strokes, and four grand mal seizures. And I can tell you, that accident claim saved my life. So once again, having it accessible made it very easy for me to be able to file that. Onsite virtual enrollment, English and Spanish, as well as excellent references with over sixty-six years from our clients. We have a foundation of representing the board, the district, employees first and foremost with all decisions. We do provide quarterly reporting. We do that with your executive team, your administration, your superintendent, and then the school board as well. We have innovative benefits and engagement functions to lower the cost for all employees while keeping people engaged. What would we do to complement the current plans? Local president, we have local presence for immediate responses. Like I said, we're located in McAllen. All communications to employees is always designed in Spanish and English. We want people to understand and have a true understanding of what their benefits are and how to utilize them. Transparency on RFPs. We do extensive spreadsheeting. So when the RFPs come in, we arrive at the same time that the purchasing director has put the time on. We take back a copy of all of those and we start spreadsheeting the next day. So we do every single benefit. We make sure not only is the price the very best for your employees, but make sure that the benefit is as well. And then we present back to your administrative team, as well as to the board, every single spreadsheet with every single carrier prices and then a complete comparison on all of them then with our final recommendations. We have onsite enrollment, no cost at all with licensed agents to the district. Books are no cost to the district as well. The enrollment system is no cost to the district as well. We do provide virtual enrollment. We do still have some people that are working from home, believe it or not, and some folks that just prefer that. So we're able to do a Zoom and do a virtual enrollment over the computer. We have the enrollment books, like I stated, information sessions for each person at each department, designed in English and Spanish. And then we do have that ability to text your entire team, as well as email. Sometimes things are a little more noticed when they're not coming from the school district anymore and we get a little more participation. Communication is something else that we do a phenomenal job of. We create an entire communication social calendar that's going to be shared with your administrative staff about three months before we do an enrollment. We usually, we calendar out the entire year, but we have a real specific three-month window prior to us doing any kind of enrollment. And it just talks about all the different stages and all the different messaging that are going to go out so people know what to look for. We don't anyone, we don't want anyone to miss the deadline to enroll, right? And make sure that they all understand their benefits. We also want to make sure that your auditing is very compliant so that you have over ninety-six percent of everybody that's actually signed that documentation on the computer, that they actually had access to enroll and that they had access to a pricing that's comparable to ACA. We do that through Facebook. We send like a birthday invitation to catch people's eye. We use text messages. We use Twitter. We use just email. We mail two postcards to everybody in their home and then we mail that book as well and we're onsite. We want to meet people at where they like to have communication, not where we think they should receive it. So we think that's just important, just as important, particularly different age groups like to receive things differently. And then we also do monthly onsite enrollment for any new employees that you may have. And with that, I am available for any questions. We would be honored to represent San Benito and have a wealth of knowledge and Pierre and I are a great team.
Excellent presentation, ma'am. Questions, board members?
How, how long have y'all been with the longest client?
We have been with SASD for eighteen years, Bear County, I think about nineteen years for Bear County, seventeen, nineteen years. And I joined the group five years ago.
Because your innovative approaches are very interesting and they're very eye-opening, but people tend to be creatures of habit. So if you're creating your own in-network, not in-network, but the narrow network with a nearby clinic and things like that, how does that affect employees that want to continue to see the providers that they've been seeing in the past?
I want you to see your doctor. I want you to go to the person you've always been to. The one thing that is the very best answer to that is when you walk through the door and they know your name, right? So we want all those people to stay, but you would be shocked if we did a survey right now, I bet sixty percent of your employees don't have a family practice home. So those are the people that we want to start connecting with a doctor, particularly in a nearside clinic. All of the research shows that the number one, the number one reason people pick their healthcare is not their insurance, it's not their pocketbook, it's convenience, believe it or not. People are willing to pay more as long as it's right down the street, right? Which we don't want them to do that. But you want those people to go that have a doctor. We want to make sure they're going to stay in the network and we want them to go see their annual appointments. And then if they're, it's an endocrinologist or diabetic, we want them to go four times a year. But we're really trying to target those folks that don't have a family practice home that are using the emergency room or not going at all.
And then your zero, your zero-dollar deductibles for visits are very, like I said, eye-opening, but what about traveling and being able to see a doctor, having to go to a hospital or an urgent care outside of home?
So you would have a PPO network. You'd be able to go anywhere you want to go. Those are just special benefits that we would have should we create something with a local hospital. Really, that helps out with that deductible for those people that aren't getting imaging, aren't getting lab work. Maybe they can't afford a three thousand dollar surgery and they've had a hernia and they've had it for two years, so I'm just holding off because I don't have the deductible. That's really what that's for. We had a cafeteria lady that had a baby the other day and didn't have a, didn't have a deductible in Carizo Springs. But they're going to have access to every single hospital, every single doctor. We want you to go to MD Anderson if you have a rare cancer. We want everybody to have access and be able to make their decisions on where their healthcare takes place. We just want to make it really convenient and easy and affordable for those that choose to go somewhere local. Great question.
Any other questions, board members? Ms. Robinson, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Hello. Can I, thank you. Well, good evening, Ms. Avion and President of the Board. Thank you for having us. My name is Corina Gonzalez. I'm with Bob Trevino Insurance. First of all, I want to thank you for your trust with this account. We are your current agents for the school district and I believe that we have provided the service that we promised when we came on board last year. My name, I'm in charge of the, I'm the Director of Operations for the Bob Trevino office and I'm the one that's in between of coordinating with the insurance department. I oversee the account and I work with the proposals. I do the comparison reports with insurance carriers and I coordinate with the district for the open enrollment and how we want to run with the district. Our agency has been in business for thirty-five years. We have grown. We do have ten staff members, seven are licensed agents. We have more on board to help service all our accounts that we have throughout the Valley. I brought with me Nora. She's one of our agents that came on board. She's been one of the contracted agents for enrollments. So she's been doing this for over ten years and she is overseeing this account. And she comes with another agent every Tuesday, so you do have the designated agent. And they basically see all the new hires, they do the claims, they help Ms. Lucy take off some of her work regarding all any changes or transfers, cancellations that need to be done. Now, I would like to, can you pass out those books? We just recently had open enrollment. It was a very successful enrollment. We provided a benefit book to all the employees and I'm going to give you a copy of it. It has all the carriers, phone numbers, websites, all the information that is needed for the employees. That one-page sheet is what we provide right before enrollment to educate your employees that were coming in, where the changes are going to be. There's a QR code that they can scan and have the benefit book on their phone. And it's a pretty, it's pretty neat because this year, I want to say, not because I was in charge this year, because I wasn't last year, it went really, really smooth. We cut down the enrollment in two and a half weeks, I believe it was thirteen days. What we did is we provided more agents. We cut down the schools. I believe we used to do two a day for enrollment, so we did one day with more agents and that was less disruption for the staff and the school. And after the enrollment, we probably didn't get to see maybe like a handful of employees. Everybody showed up, of course, except those that are in the FMLA. But we worked very closely with your insurance department to coordinate and get everything going. Right after enrollment, I'm in charge of pulling out all the reports. We reconciled and I want to say to, right now, we're in December, everything has been going great and smooth. Lucy's really good, you know, in your department and so we, she finds every penny and so we work really good. We cut everything right away. So it's been a very good enrollment. I also would like to say that we have our own customer service team at the office as well. So we help and back up all our agents with anything that's needed for your plans. Now, on that flyer that we did also, just to review it really quick, all the benefits that we offer. This year, we brought in the cancer policy. I know that last year, you just had a critical illness with the writers, so we try to offer more benefits for the employees. Our agents are in charge of going over all the benefits, educate the employees, what's best for them, what they like to do. I would like to say that also on our claims, we do cross-check all the benefits to make sure that they can file on all of them that they have. Most of our supplementals have a reimbursement, so they make sure they get it on their cancer, their critical, their accident, the hospital, all of them have a reimbursement for the employees. Now, I'm always involved with the district as well and I would like to say that this year, you know, we did have several deaths unfortunately in the district. We, you know, helping the families, we were able to modify some of the plans that would benefit the employees and their family members. For example, the UL Life that we offered and, thank you, Ms. Avion, I had to send an email and she approved it. They also went ahead and added a rider with no additional fee to the employees and added that accidental death to double the benefit. But that was really great. We work with the employees, the insurance, but we always try to do the best for, you know, your employees, so we treat them like family and we try to get them all the benefits that pertain to them. I never skipped anything, I'm so sorry. So we do also offer our own enrollment software, so we coordinate, we can do online enrollment and that's a benefit that the school district would like to do. But we like to do face-to-face, it's more in the personal level and we can educate them on all the benefits that they, that they have. But then, again, just want to say thank you for your service, thank you for your partnership and the trust, and I hope that you are happy with the service that we are, we have provided to the district. Do you have any questions for me?
I want to make a comment. You know, when it comes to our employees, cost of living is increasing and insurance premiums are increasing out of pocket, expenses and so forth. And so I like that you provided here a summary of what things are going to cost the employees so that there's no questions to it. You have here the dental summary, the low plan, the high plan, eye exams, vision benefits and so forth, so that everything can be black and white and transparent so that we, as board members, we can make a decision as to what would be the best insurance company or the best option for the employees. So I appreciate all this information that you provided.
Thank you. One of the things that we haven't done that I would really like for us to coordinate with the insurance department is maybe doing the health there. I know with the whole COVID and the pandemic, we've pulled off on it, I don't know, but in the previous, when we were the agents here, we did have, you know, year, one, one time a year and that helps us, you know, promote our employees to be healthy. We do a little bit of giveaways. We try to get involved as much as we can. This year, last year, we were involved with the homecoming, you know, with the students, we were giving, you know, backpacks, we were giving the, what they call the lanyards pants. And I was one of the ones that was out there with the school district. This year, due to the hurricane, the shipments of Florida, they couldn't, you know, bring them to us unfortunately, but we always want to give back to the community, to the scholarships, to everything that we can do for you guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions, board members?
I have one more question. Earlier, some, a different company mentioned the 529 Plan, which is where the employees can start saving money for their child's college education. Is that something that you all are providing as well or is that something that you can...
Our agency, that's a different license, but we contract for those and we can bring someone in. Those are very good benefits to provide.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there available to you, to you guys, the 529?
Yes, we partner with another agency that does that because that's a different license, a total other field, so.
I was just going to ask a quick question. What is the savings that you have brought to the school district, do you know, since you guys came on board?
And all our voluntary products, when we went out for bid, we provided great plans for a lower cost. The medical insurance is still in force, that one. There has been a lot of large claims. You're going to be here with another large one because I got an email. We track them, we keep, we do monthly meetings with the staff here, with Ms. Lucy, Mr. Gallegos, and I know Ms., Ms. Marla, I'm so sorry, I forgot her last name. Ms. Marla, yes. We'll be working with her monthly meetings. We compare claims versus premium where we're at. I do want to say the claims are really, really high, they've gone high. It's something that we need to look at this coming year.
So there has been an increase?
On claims, yes, on claims.
But plans, the cost of the plan is still the same?
The cost of the plan is still the same for the employee. The only one that was an increase was on the dental.
The dental plan is the one that increased?
That's the only one that increased.
Do you know what the percentage was on that increase?
I don't recall. I do not recall to tell you that, to be honest.
I know it was presented to us, when, when Mr. Trevino, a couple of months ago, it was presented to us, but there's also a misconception because of the, where, where, the, what is it, that you just mentioned, the premium? No, not the premiums, the, the claims.
Oh, yeah.
And that's cost, that's costing more, but it, but there hasn't been no increase to the employee for, for any of these voluntary products or any of the products that they purchased.
No, we, we did a, we, we saved them money in all the supplemental products. It was just a slight increase on the dental. So we do provide monthly reports and we are on the phone with Blue Cross. We discuss the claims and the utilization and who's using the virtual, the virtual visits. Who could be going to, and I actually added it on the book this year and it wasn't provided before, where to go, instead of going to emergency room, they can go to an urgent care. It's less for the school, less for the employee, the virtual visits as well, it's less money. So I did provide that flyer in the booklet, so the employees, so when our agents go and see them, they go over that and let them know and to register on the website. There's a health assessment that they register. They earn points, they get free gifts, you know, it tracks their phone or their iWatch to, to work out, so it's a pretty neat benefit. So we constantly trying to educate the employees on staying healthy to bring costs down.
But you all, you all did save our employees some, some money compared to what they were...
On the voluntary products, yes, we did. The medical stayed the same when we came on board. We are looking at, at those rates and because they have increased as far as claim-wise.
Do you foresee an increase being, coming for our employees?
I believe the medical's going to be up for renewal and will be... So we do provide monthly reports and we are on the phone with Blue Cross. We discuss the claims and the utilization and who's using the virtual, the, the virtual visits. Who could be going to, and I actually added it on the book this year and it wasn't provided before, where to go instead of going to emergency room, they can go to an urgent care, it's less for the school, less for the employee. The virtual visits as well is less money, so I did provide that flyer in the booklet so the employees, so when our agents go and see them, they go over that and let them know and to register on the website. There's a health assessment that they register. They earn points, they get free gifts, you know, it tracks their phone or their iWatch to, to work out, so it's a pretty neat benefit. So we constantly trying to educate the employees on staying healthy to bring costs down.
But you all, you all did save our employees some, some money compared?
On the voluntary products, yes, we did. Mm-hmm. The medical stayed the same when we came onboard. We are looking at, at those rates and because they have increased as far as claim-wise.
Do you foresee an increase being, coming for our employees?
I believe the medical's going to be up for renewal and we'll be seeing those rates and then what I will do is I'll offer, ask them to give us, you know, some type of rate relief so they don't lose the business. If not, we do look for other options with the other carriers who can provide and match. We look at rates, benefits, claims. Some companies might be cheaper, but they're not the best ones for claims and service, you know, so.
When you say that, you mean like switching maybe from Blue Cross Blue Shield to United Healthcare or some, that?
To, to other carriers or modify. I believe that during the mid-year, we did make some changes as far as we removed a third party for like diabetic supply. They were charging more than Blue Cross will charge. We did the transition for 10-1. We did not have any disruption. We had maybe one employee just asked, you know, if they needed to get a new prescription, but the cost from Blue Cross was a lot less. That saved you guys money, you don't have to pay that other company for that service that they were providing.
Can you explain the, the rider that I signed and what that rider is about and how that did not increase any kind of a cost for the employee?
So, so the life insurance, it's a, a life insurance that pays for the death. So that's a rider that the, an employee will pay additional and it, you need to select it and it wasn't selected during the enrollment and that's additional fee. So when we did have, you know, some employees that passed away due to an accident, I went and looked at it and I said, you know, they didn't provide it. They're like, well, it's an optional, an extra rider. I'm like, well, you'll all honor it, it's a universal life. With universal life, we can pay with, play with the premiums. And they said, well, we'll need a letter, a signature, if they approve it, we won't charge the employees extra, but they're going to, everybody's going to get a new policy. So what we did is we sent a massive email to all the employees letting them know they have the life insurance, you're going to be getting a new email, a new booklet, you can disregard the new policy, it has more riders at no additional cost. So that was able for the family members to file and they were able to get that additional extra benefit. So. I mean, we, we do a lot as far, and especially myself, when it comes to claims, I try to help them as much as possible. You know, like if it was my parents, you know, or anybody, because it's, it's hard, it's hard for them, it's hard for us. I mean, any type of death that I do, you know, it's, it hurts me and it just, you know, we just have to appreciate life and, but we try to do what's best for the employee. You know, it didn't cost the member more, it didn't cost us more, the district more, but it was an extra benefit. And they do it for us as well, you know, to keep the business and they just came onboard all states. So they've been really good with claims and, and the process of claims getting paid right away, so we haven't had any issues.
Any further questions? Ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we motion to adjourn, what, what's the discussion that we need to have in reference to our tally sheets? Do these, I know they need to be turned in to Mr. Cabazos. A, a copy prior to even making the recommendation for whatever we're going to choose to do next Tuesday. So what is, what is the deadline for each board member to turn in those tally sheets?
We would like to have them by Monday. That way we can look at the various scores and then we can rank them from one to five.
So these will be turned in to either, either you or Mr. Cabazos, but Mr. Cabazos will ultimately be the one that, that gets these?
You can turn them into my office.
To your office?
To your office.
We can also just email them.
Is it fine to email them, Mr. Cabazos? You need the actual form, right?
But, but can we email them or do you need the actual copy? You need the hard copy?
We need the copy of all, everybody's score so like that we can rank them accordingly and then we'll put them one, two, three, four.
Correct, but, but like, like if Ms., if Dr. Cruz can, can, does she have to give you the hard copy or can she just email you, scan and email you? Is there, is there?
I would prefer the hard copy.
Okay.
Okay, not a problem. Okay, that's why, you, you need to originate them.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer.
Prefer that.
So Monday, so we go visit you. Are you going to? We have a Tuesday's meeting. We'll help evaluate and rank them.
We, we can, we can collect them here. Ms. Rosa can, Mrs. Rosa can collect them and then she'll forward them to Mr. Cabazos.
Thank you, Mr. Cabazos. Thank you for your assistance with these presenters, with these presentations. All right, with no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I do, I do have a question.
Okay.
On that note, so because Tuesday will be the change, because of Ms. Lopez's resignation, will it just be the six people that have submitted the tally sheet voting? Mr. Weller?
No, ma'am. On Tuesday, well, a couple of things would need to happen. Our new board member would need to submit a statement to assume the, the duties of a trustee. And then secondly, he would need to be sworn in to office as a San Benito ISD School Board trustee. Assuming those two things happen by the time of the meeting next Tuesday, then he can fully participate in voting. Up until the time that he takes both those steps, is sworn in and fully qualifies for the position, Ms. Lopez holds over under Texas law as the trustee. But assuming that he does so by Tuesday, then you would have seven trustees voting, including him.
So, so will he be able to vote? He wasn't, he wasn't in attendance, Mr. Weller, for all the presentations, but if, if he's going to take office after being sworn in, so can we, at this point, provide him the literature, provide him everything that all of us got so that after being sworn in, he will also have a vote if we choose to vote on one of these insurance agents?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I imagine he could watch the video of the meeting, review the materials.
Correct.
Nothing preventing him from asking questions.
So with that said, Mr. Cabazos, can I ask that, that you and your team provide Mr. Gomez copies of all of these and, and we will trust that Ms. Avion will ask him to possibly view the video to get, to get insight on, on the presentations tonight. And that way we'll have a, a seven-member vote or decision. Okay. Does that answer your question, Dr. Cruz?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So let's go back and, and the motion to adjourn? Okay, we had Mario Silva motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Janie Lopez. All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for everything. Have a good night.